Call to order New Windsor Town Council work session for August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Our first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five's work session meeting. You all should have received those this past week and reviewed them. Do we have any questions about the minutes? Any revisions? Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes as written?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion to accept the minutes as written. Do I have a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Item number two is a resolution in the Sustainable Maryland Municipal Certification Program. In our folders for tonight's meeting is our resolution. I won't read the entire resolution, but it's a town in New Windsor Resolution Number zero-eight dash one-eight dash two-five. A resolution supporting the participation in the Sustainable Maryland Municipal Certification Program. Alright, again, this is for the Sustainable Maryland program that we agreed on last, last meeting. Last, I believe, council meeting to accept to participate in the program. Please remember that this is just the first step. There's like five other steps that we have to accomplish, which includes establishing a leader for the program and someone to kind of organize a committee. So we'll work on those items, but this is the first step. Any questions about the resolution? Alright, if there are no questions, do I have a motion to accept the resolution, zero-eight dash one-eight dash two-five?
I'll make a motion to accept resolution zero-eight dash one-eight dash two-five.
Great. We have a resolution to accept resolu- uh, we have a, a motion to accept resolution number zero-eight dash one-eight dash two-five. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, so. Alright. Policies and review. Pastor Fraser Mangus, is that your charge?
Yes, it is.
Alright.
So everybody got a records and retention policy as well as an investment policy. And as everybody knows, the state is requiring us to submit our investment policy, so. Two of them got written really quick. Any questions? Did they make any questions while they reviewed? Michelle has reviewed them. And I currently do have a banker reviewing the investment policy as well, just to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's there.
I do have a couple.
So I got my red pen out.
So see if I can follow through with my notes. It says, under the purpose.
Oh, which one are we talking about?
We're starting with the records retention.
Okay.
Okay?
Purpose, yes.
Okay. That the state, that we utilize the state archives.
Yes.
For retention, for our retention location per approved schedule. And I, somewhere else in there, I read that that was an annual thing that we do. And we put our data backups there as well. So it's just kind of like, as I read the whole thing, I was going through it and I found those things throughout the document. And I just want to verify that's, that's what we do. We send stuff to the state archives, including our data backups.
So yes, that's what we would do, yes.
Okay. Alright. Under email correspondence, a little further down.
Yes, sir.
We talk about. Purging email, a hundred and eighty days by printing it if you want to keep it and saving it offline. I, I found that to be a little strange, right? That, I mean, it, it talks about if we're using town computer resources, our emails, that we should only save them for six months, a hundred and eighty days. And if we wanted to keep those emails, we need to print them and save them offline. Is that something like, I mean, I archive and keep my emails and I do not purge after a hundred and eighty. Is anybody purging after a hundred and eighty days and printing their emails?
So we put that in there because of Public Information Act. If we have an email of it, it can technically be used for public information.
Correct.
So that's why we put that in there. Unless the email fell under another category, like say, we had a lawsuit going on, that would fall in. Emailing back with, with, uh, forth with Michelle and the jet, those emails would fall under litigation. If you wanted to, I'm, I'm reading it again. Give me a second to read it, where you find that line. She just keeps the email longer. So if an employee wishes to keep the email longer than a hundred, he or she should print, file and store the email records at the same manner as great correspondence. So then it would go back under to correspondence. Right, yeah. If we, if you want to make it longer, okay.
No, I'm not, I'm not asking. I'm just, because I have not done that. I don't know how I really feel about that. As you know, I kind of like to keep stuff, so I can pull it up later and say, no, we did do that. And that's going to.
Be gone, pretty much.
Yeah, that would totally be, yeah, and I'm not doing that. I'm not doing that.
So I can't remember, because actually I'm going to a meeting this Thursday for the Public Information Act Board. Does that, is that like what it says? Is there any language in there about that?
Okay. I'll stop that. I don't know exactly.
I mean, that, it's a good point.
Yeah. That's, and, um.
Yeah.
Is it after six months that it's no longer subject to the Public Information Act? An email?
So anything that you have on an email can be used as a public information.
So if we, if we.
That's why, that's why.
Purging is six months and it's no longer subject to that.
It's no longer subject.
It's gone. I know, I keep mine longer.
Yep, I mean, I.
I'm not gonna lie to you.
I don't have anything scandalous in my email, so.
Yeah, you don't have too much, you don't have to worry about that, yeah, you know? I've been, I've been doing this for fourteen years. But yeah, that's some, I mean, because as the person who pa- I mean, we, we had a request two years ago about a, a person who left. And I had to find and, and include every single email about that person. That even some that had nothing to do with why the person left. So there, there is, there is a lot of, there is a reas- I mean, I can see why, and you know, and. And the way the act is written, you don't have to create records if they don't exist, but if you have them, you have to produce them. So it is something to take into consideration, yeah.
If you want to make it longer, we definitely can. You know, say a year.
Maybe we should ask.
Is there a way that we can manage archived files, like for instance, with our, as, as IT provider? Is there a way that they can archive files older than six months on our behalf?
Then that would fall, fall under IT.
You're thinking more of the management of the files.
Yeah, I'm thinking more of the management.
Instead of printing it.
Oh.
You know, you know.
Because. You know, once it's printed, then you have to have someplace to store it and, you know, that becomes an issue. If it were, and, and that actually feels somewhat antiquated to do it that way. I would imagine if we could store them electronically somewhere after more than six months, because goodness, six months ago, we were just, we were talking about the budget. If we had a question about the budget, you know.
Yeah, I guess the, the issue with that, then, then that falls into the electronic media storage.
Right, so if it's stored in another location, it's still probably considered susceptible to.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We have it.
Public information.
Maryland IT and data backup. Backups of all Microsoft three sixty data, including OneDrive, SharePoint, Exchange, which is email, calendars, contacts, teams, et cetera, is automatically completed every eight hours. So they back it up every eight hours and ever seen by Maryland IT or IT provider. Maryland IT retains all backup data listed above for one year unless otherwise directed by the town. So if it's something like, again, a litigation thing where, hey, they, as far as the emails, can we keep them longer? We, he, he will keep them.
I mean, if you guys are all o- okay, I, I just read that and thought, wow, that's something I am not doing. And if that's what we need to do, I'm not, I'm not trying to.
We should.
Difficult about it.
I was right, like, for instance, when I start to do five K stuff or, or any, any event that occurs each year, I'll always go back, say, okay, when did I start and who, who, who are my contacts? You know, I mean, it just, it helps to go back to that same time, and that's why I, I default to like a year.
Is the purpose of this to reduce our electronic footprint? Cause we could solve this by just adding the word minimum of six months. So you're not supposed to delete things in four months, keep it for six. If you want to keep it for five years, keep it for five years. Keep it for twelve years, keep it for twelve years.
You have to, then every time I have to answer a Public Information Act, then every one of you is gonna have to go through all that stuff, find me everything about whatever subject it is.
But that would be at that person's discretion.
It would be at their discretion to save. It wouldn't be at their discretion to answer me.
So kind of, if that was the case, if it was not, no shorter than six months, and we get PIA requests and you, and we all gotta say, okay, we need any information you have. And I'm, I, I've purged it six months and I don't got, I checked my six months, I got nothing. Or, you know, Dave's got twelve years, whatever, he's got all kinds of stuff. So that's how it would work. If I don't have it, or anybody doesn't have it, they don't have it.
But I would suggest to make it coherent, that we all follow the same policy. Like, if it's a year, then we all follow a year, not Gary, keep it for seven years and, and so forth. So it's not like, hey. Not that I'm picking on you.
Nah, cause.
If I had to guess, the Maryland IT backups are not a, hi, find me this email. It's dump my email archive.
Find it.
Yeah, it's a little more than like, hi, can I search this back database? It's all of it.
Six months seems so short.
It's long enough. I think we need to make it longer.
A year seems short.
Whatever you say, we still have to, we still have to maintain all the other records that follow below. So.
Yeah.
It's basically, we're getting rid of, I don't know, we got some stuff from the cable company that wanted us to come for the ribbon cutting and stuff like that. We can get rid of, but we still have to keep everything else, the council meetings, proclamations and those things.
Right.
Do a year and a half.
See, I'm kinda like, like Gary, just for example, music on the main stuff, right? I pull up my last year's music on the main file to make sure I got everything at the time for the liquor license thing, right? I wouldn't, so I wouldn't want to purge it six months. I really wouldn't want to purge it one year. I need a little bit more time.
Year and a half? Somebody think.
I would think most things a year and a half would suffice.
I'd be fine with that.
A year and a half?
Yeah.
I would, I would think, yeah.
But that is, we're gonna ask you to do math at seven thirteen in the evening, guys, and I was doing around three fifty-five.
Eighteen months.
She's doing days.
I'm doing days.
She's doing days.
So one eighty-two. Point five, one eighty-three.
Why don't we just say one ninety to make it clean?
Yeah, I can do one ninety.
Yeah.
So five hundred and fifty-five days.
It was like meant to be.
A document for new council people that say that.
Five fifty-five. Play in the lottery and if you win, I get half.
I don't have to worry about that.
Six hundred and five million dollars.
Oh, that was the.
Wow. There'll be signs that I won, guys.
One of them would be, you wouldn't be here.
Alright, I had one, one more thing.
Yes, sir.
Under the retention time periods, it talks about our video and camera recordings that we have to, that those, those are retained, that footage for thirty days.
Yes, sir.
Later on, it talks about minutes of mayor and council meetings have to be kept permanently. So my question is, are the videos of our meetings considered minutes of the meeting? Because they're the only things that really have the details of our, our meetings. The, the minutes that we get are pretty much a summary of our meeting. And so I'm not trying to mince words, but if the, if the recordings are our minutes, are considered minutes, then we can't destroy them after thirty days. They would need to be held permanently.
So CMC handles all of the meeting, like meetings. I was think, I took the videos as the security video, the security videos. Like the cameras that are outside.
Okay.
And those are on the NVR and they are kept for thirty days and then they erase. So I can definitely check with CMC on how long they take it. I know they're posted on YouTube.
I think they were there for a lot longer than thirty days.
Our moment.
Yeah.
I thought the same thing. When I read it about video, I'm thinking.
I was thinking these.
Probably just add some kind of description, like, or like, like building videos or whatever. I don't know what it would be.
Well, I would, I can tell you for a fact, I don't know if it's on purpose, but they keep, uh, CMC keeps those recordings for at least ten years. Cause I went back ten years to, to watch forum meetings from this past, well, our election cycle. So they had one from at least twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen. I don't know if that was intentional.
They keep it on their channel. You can pull stuff off your channel. They keep it on the channel. It's there.
But whatever y'all decide, that, that was.
We'll take a little recording. I'll double check with CMC on that and how long they keep it.
You can't really tell CMC how long to keep stuff, so.
Yeah.
No.
You know.
Alright, does that answer all the questions there?
It's all mine.
Alright. Anyone else have questions? Policies. Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to pass them? I feel like, but that's up to you guys.
With the re- we can make the motion that we pass them with the revisions.
With the revisions. I do have the investment policy to the bank, just again, I have to dot my i's and cross my j's.
Yeah, we'll wait on that one.
I have not heard from them, so if you want to hold off, maybe we can do it at the council meeting?
Yeah, why don't we hold off on all of it?
Maybe you can just double check with Michelle about the time while we're at it.
Alright, thank you, Pluck Treasure Mangus. Let's see. Town manager Di, did you have some items that you wanted to share?
On the delinquent water sewer bills?
Yes.
Yes, I do. Give me one second. Okay, so. So, uh, last Tuesday, the twelfth, uh, Water Sewer Bill clerk Hershey sent an email with an update on delinquent water sewer accounts. She also mentioned that at the previous council meeting. And a follow-up email was sent today with updated numbers. The email summarized shut-off notices and delinquent past due letters. So I don't have the specific numbers from the council meeting here, but the August eighth email that she sent, there were eight shut-off notices scheduled for the next day on the thirteenth. There were a hundred and eighteen past due accounts totaling seventy-seven thousand nine eighty-six fifteen. And then four Springdale accounts passed due total of twenty-three thousand five thirty-four fifty-five. So the difference between the total of past dues without the Springdales fifty, was fifty-four, four fifty-one. So then as of today, we have made some progress. As of today, at three-thirty, uh, we only have one property still shut off of the original eight that were posted. We believe that person may be on vacation. And then there's eighty-eight, we're down to eighty-eight past due accounts totaling sixty-one thousand nine seventy-sixty-two. The four Springdale accounts remain unchanged. I'll touch on that in a second. So that brings our number down to thirty-eight thousand four thirty-six oh seven. In terms of the Springdale accounts, Wayne and Kim talked to Springdale Prep and, um, they were, they, they're, they're typically the first commercial customer to pay. This is not typical for them. So we're waiting on a payment response from, they just talked to them today, uh, this afternoon. So we're waiting on response from there. We do have a meeting, um, we're scheduling to develop another policy. For delinquent water and sewer accounts, kind of just the timing and of when we do what throughout the process. Kim, Kim and Wayne handle most of that. Um, most, we, we've talked about it at previous council meetings and we just want to get that together and then writing another, another policy, so we have it together. So we're working on that meeting for that.
Gary, I will send you and Kim an email. I've talked with Councilman Hoffman a couple times about an idea for like a, um, layout of a policy like that. So I'll just fire off our notes and you guys incorporate it, however you guys want.
So Gary, did we, you might not even know this, this could be a question for Kim, did, cause last time when we met and we talked about what a, how unusual it was for it to be this many. I think the number was, it was what, Dave, do you remember what the percentage was? It was twice as much? Something like that than we had ever had. I remember Kim told us.
Yeah, it was like somebody's got one.
Something one time and a hundred. So this is still pretty, yeah, this is pretty, still pretty high to be at eighty-eight.
We're making progress, but.
Oh, yeah, I'm not picking on you guys. I'm just, did we ever hear any feedback that people never got the bills or anything like that, that you know of?
So I answered the phone a couple times. I had a couple people say that I wrote the email and they, and, but I don't know, that was maybe two people that I know. I'm the third, third, fourth person to get the phone.
Yeah.
So I'm not a good example.
I think Anne Marie and Kim were talking with the ba- with the post office. And there, there, there was a, there were some that apparently were not, did not get to people, but I don't have a number of that. There, there was a lot.
Some doesn't sound like.
Yeah, it's, it's, I don't think it's what we're seeing here.
Yeah, like, it, like, you know, like if twice as many people are getting their water shut off as usual, and it was the mail, I'd expect like a half or more of those people to be people who never got a bill. But it doesn't sound like that's what happened, because I would think our phones would be blown up. People started getting turnoff notices and they never got the bill in the first place.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know the exact number, but I don't think it was a large portion of.
No, it's not a factor.
Number that we're seeing here. I don't, we, we're really kind of scratching our heads as to why this, this surfaced like this.
We've really only had of the delinquents, we've only had twenty-five percent that have taken care of their bill and brought them up to. And that just seems, I mean, six days or, you know, from the, what we see on, that just seems so low.
Don't we typically float around like seventy accounts though, that are?
I think so. She floats, and that's one thing when you have a policy, it needs to be black and white. There shouldn't be a gray area, and I love the fact that she tries to help them. But we're seeing it affect the town and the, and the income of the town, and that can't. So when the policy is written and adopted, it needs to be black and white and we need to follow it to the point. I have reached out to all the other municipalities and I have what they do. And they're lenient, but they are black and white. Hey, you don't pay, you're done.
Yeah.
You're shut off.
Leniency has a limit.
Yeah, it has a limit and we don't want to be, not that people are taking advantage of town, but we, you know.
But if you know you're not gonna, your feet aren't gonna be held to the fire, then you're not gonna.
Then you know you're not.
Yeah, I mean, this, this isn't just dollars and cents, which is substantial. I mean, that's a lot of money. But it's also all the staff time that this is taking up. Like when you're driving around hanging door hangers, when you're spending the whole day on the phone with people. I mean, there's other costs to this, you know, so. And most of these people's bills are not that different than they've been probably, so I don't, there shouldn't be a big surprise. Like you've made it easier with the new system, so it's, it's concerning.
Yeah, and the new, this is not.
This is the new system.
With the new system and the new rates, like.
Tabs on the bill system, yeah, yeah, but no, it's right.
We haven't seen that, that.
Impacted, yeah.
Yeah. Which will help a lot.
If a lot of people didn't get their bills, you know, I mean, they know they're getting this water bill. They talk about it all the time. They're at home, you know? It's, it seems, it seems odd.
Forgot to ask this question and it probably was in Kim's notes. Do we remember if this was concentrated in any particular neighborhoods? Was it everywhere?
It was the div- it was the subdivisions, I think primarily.
But, yeah. But not one of them in, in, in particular.
She is. I mean, the shut-off list was a good portion of everywhere.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't see the whole full list. I just had numbers.
Okay.
The puzzling thing to me is that they're typically regular paying customers.
Yeah.
That are paying and my concern is if there's something going on, uh, you know, maybe economically that we're just not aware of. But typically when you have paying customers, uh, or consistently paying customers, you would expect that that would continue unless there's something dramatic. And this is dramatic enough for us to take notice because it's so many of them, so.
Definitely dramatic.
I mean, that Wayne made a suggestion, I'll throw it out there, but, um, I'm doing some kind of poll or something. I think that's just opening the campfire.
I agree with you.
Poll for what?
What was the question they asked? I, we didn't get into any details. It shut down pretty quick. But I guess to poll the residents as to.
Well, it, it might be, it might be good if we have folks that actually come forward and, of the folks that are still outstanding, if we ask, you know, was there an issue, what, or what the issue was.
Kind of collect anecdotal evidence or whatever you want, feedback, just to kind of, you know, be sorry.
That would make sense.
Yeah. Uh, something informal that doesn't turn into a campaign.
I mean, I mean, I think that the, the changes that the staff made to make it easier to pay it every month is about, I mean, it's a bill. I mean, we all have bills that we get every month.
I know once, like shortly after we moved in twenty-two, I got a stack of at least fifteen water bills in my mailbox. They were just like.
That's when we were having trouble with bulk mail.
The bulk, yeah.
And like they would go to Baltimore and they'd get lost. And then, so we had to remail them just here in town. And then unfortunately, you guys got like bombarded with fifteen water bills, but yeah.
Well, they were not for me, they were for my neighbors.
Oh, they were.
I got my neighbor's bills, like the, the little blue cards. They were, they were just like neatly stacked on top, like stuck together almost.
The post office, that is not.
You're not stapling them all together?
I took them and dropped them at the post office.
Josh.
I'm sure you were popular.
Hi, I'm your new neighbor.
Going back to areas of the town, uh, in her first email, twenty-two of thirty shut-off notices were Snader's, Blue Ridge and Atlee. So a large chunk, two-thirds are the developments around town. You can extrapolate that over the delinquent accounts if you want. It's not listed here, but it's, it seems like it might be skewed a little bit.
Well, there's nothing glaring that it's explaining this to us, that's for sure.
Not, not at this point in time. I think the policies, establishing the policy and getting it set in stone is a good thing.
Typical timeframe for shut-offs?
That's what.
That's what we.
Outline all that.
Well, outline, yeah.
And, and.
And who gets shut off. Again, she's done great with working with people, but it, it.
It's not a policy right now. It's kind of how, how the staff work with them for the most part. You know, most people will start paying a little and get caught up, you know, but when you, what, how many thousands, tens of thousands in the whole? You know, we can't, that's not sustainable. We can't do that.
Policy will be in there before the town council meeting.
Alright.
I'm moved out.
Any further questions about the delinquent accounts? Alright.
Just have one or two other notes, uh, uh, se- separate things, just things to mention. The two-eleven High Street redevelopment, we're working on a meeting with the fire, uh, New Windsor Fire Department and town staff. So that'd be the next step. Next step is redevelopment of two-eleven. And then just another reminder about the. Next step is redevelopment of two eleven, and then just another reminder about the, uh, fifth annual, uh. Frank Shafer Memorial Five K Run Walk, it's Saturday, October eighteenth, nine o'clock, Wakefield Valley Park. Sponsor request letters and forms went out last week, if you're interested in sponsoring the event in any way or volunteering, please contact town hall. This is a five K run walk that takes place on, uh, primarily paved trails at Wakefield Valley Park, so you can be a serious or casual runner. Or walker, um, just spread the word and consider signing up.
And, uh, for the benefit of preparation and those who might wanna help volunteer, when is that meeting, Gary?
Uh, the next meeting is, planning meeting is.
August twenty eighth.
Next Thursday, about two thirty here. I still gotta get a contact with, uh, Westminster Roadrunners, cause Craig Byer, who's the president. He can't make the meetings due to work, but we need someone at the meetings. Just for their part of it, and a contact person, we need to get that, I actually went on their website and filled out a request. To whoever it goes to, to say, hey, this is coming up, can you, it's live on runsignup.com, can you, can you post it? Cause it's not listed currently as one of their events right now, um, and then also told him that a flyer's coming and we'll get that to him. Sooner or later, um, so, yeah.
Alright, so two thirty on the.
Two thirty on the twenty eighth here.
Alright. Any other items? There are announcements for the, for the community. Alright, um, upcoming council meeting, the next council meeting is September third. And then, uh, that's Wednesday, September third, um, our next work session is Monday. September fifteenth. And then, uh, the following meeting is Wednesday, October first for the council meeting, alright, okay.
Yes, I will not be here.
Oh, good.
Will not be here on.
On the main meeting in September?
We'll do it, uh, right before the council meeting, there's only thirteen spots left.
So we'll make that announcement, the next, uh, music on the main meeting will be for, be for our next council meeting on the third. Um, additionally, in preparation for, um, the traveling, uh, Vietnam Memorial Wall. We will continue our painting pro- uh, pr- program on Tuesday morning at, uh, eight AM. From eight to twelve, the meeting spot is right out front, right out front of town hall, and we paint for. Couple hours, should be pretty cool tomorrow. Um, so we'll be doing that for the rest of the, uh, month of August, and then, uh, maybe. Um, I did get some interest from a couple church members that wanna maybe work on the weekend, cause they can't take off during the week to paint, so. Uh, but if you've noticed, we, we, we put a pretty good dent in the ones that are, um, that are right on Main Street and, uh, and High. So, or High, so, um, those are the announcements that I have, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second? All in favor?